Follow me in the order. Please rise. Then I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. Please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the rule.
Alderman Basso. Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern. Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, and Treasurer.
All right, no special presentations tonight. Under consent calendar, we've got four items. The approval of the city council meeting, August 2nd, 2022, approval of the payroll and the voucher list for the period ending August 12th, 2022, the approval of the proclamation for ovarian cancer awareness month for the month of September 2022, and approval of the proclamation recognizing the daughters of the American Revolution, Salvo Cliff Chapter, and proclaiming September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Someone please make a motion to approve the consent.
Second.
McGrogan, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Okay, no sealed bids. Special, under my report, just to remind everyone that school is starting. Please be careful when you're driving through town and school buses when they stop and the like for these children as they go and come from school. The motion to approve the reappointment of Daniel Liston to the police pension board for a two-year period ending September 15th, 2024.
So.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Key. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City clerk?
No court.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The treasurer's report for the month ending July 31st, 2022. The general fund began the month with $5,745,215. Revenue for the general fund was $831,574. Expenses for July were $1,112,510. Other source use $195, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $5,464,084. Total of all city funds began the month with $23,436,764. Revenues for July were $1,568,457. Expenses for the month were $1,769,117. Other source use $215,228, giving an ending cash balance of all city funds of $23,020,876. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report? Some. Moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Attorney is not with us tonight. Any communications? Anyone have? Citizens wishing to address counsel? Name and address, please.
Joan Vito, 12232 South 71st Avenue. I just have a question regarding the property at 12303 South 71st Court that you want to have the zoning changed from residential to business, and I just want to know when that meeting will take place.
The first meeting of September.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Linda Skiappa, 13442 Edinburgh Drive, Palis Heights, Illinois. I am speaking on behalf of the recreational advisory board this evening. I would like to thank Alderman Key, Alderman Violet, and Alderman Clifford for giving us the opportunity to speak and share the following concerns at last month's rec committee meeting regarding the new ordinance being voted on at tonight's meeting for the rec advisory board. I can say that I have been given permission to speak and represent the majority of the rec advisory board with the exception of one person who I was unable to reach because this is really, I've been so rushed. RAB has never had the opportunity to discuss this as a group or in a meeting on any of the proposed changes. The only one and only draft we received was sent on July 3rd. I can say the last time the rec advisory board ordinance was reviewed, I believe it was in 2015, and it was an agenda item at one of our meetings. The point is, is that we, the RAB, was a part of the conversation. Now, some of the current language may have been revised. I am uncertain. I have not been given a copy of the actual ordinance that was voted on at last Tuesday's rec committee meeting. I like to believe that the RAB, for as long as I have served, which is about 26 years, I believe, we have had a fantastic and productive working relationship, first and foremost with our director, but with the rec committee, and with mayors as well. That being said, I would like to share with the entire council, before you cast your vote to adopt this ordinance, some of the major accomplishments our city has achieved with the strong partnerships between our mayor, rec committee, and the RAB. This has been as accomplished through leadership, inspiration, great communication, support, and fiscal responsibility, all of which is equally important. Some of the things that were conceived at our RAB meetings, and I'm sorry if some of you, this is redundant for, new bathrooms at the PBO field, renovation of the bathrooms and the outside of the rec center prior to our referendum for our new rec center, 4th of July being changed to 3rd of July. I don't know how many of you have been around, but 3rd of July, I mean, 4th of July was on the striking. We inspired the 4th of July parade. We have West Gate Park because members from the rec advisory board came to a city council meeting when the developers were there, and we demanded that we have park space there. We asked for 20, we got two and a half. Still happy. We have a park there. I wish someone would have been so thoughtful when they were developing Misty Meadow, but thrilled to see this beautiful, beautiful new park that is there. Woo-hoo! I can bring my grandchildren. Anyways, back. The path to independent school, the 9/11 memorial. We, as the advisory board, came to several 4th of Julys to fundraise. We had a private party up in the clubhouse at Lake Catherine. We solicited baskets and had raffles, and we raised the money for the 9/11 memorial that sits in front of our building. We were the ones that recommended that we have a girl softball team. We now have a power field for the girls. The Cal SAG Trag, Cal SAG Trail, bike racks, park standards, maintenance plan of parks in the rec center, park renovation and rotation, tennis court renovation, rec center renovation, updates at the pool, pickleball, community park, Meyer Park, Palmer Park, Misty Meadow Park. These are all things that we talked about monthly at our meetings, and we're always included, and I hope, like to think that, you know, once again, working with the rec committee, working with the mayor, that we were able to accomplish this together as a team. Some of the other planning that was discussed at RAB meetings, we had developed a long-term plan, a strategic plan, budget, creation and development of our mission sta- oh, CAPRA, CAPRA, which I'm almost afraid that may be in jeopardy because we haven't met our goal and had to ask for an extension. So hopefully, we will achieve that. That's a huge achievement. Creation and development of our mission statement is values: exceptional internal and external guest services, innovation, partnerships, physical and environmental and fiscal sustainability, proactive communication, external and internal. Vision: to create a healthy, connected community through play. Mission: to create memorable experiences through people, innovative programs, parks, and partnerships. My question for the council is, how do we continue these great achievements in the community with only three meetings a year? Three. I don't see how that happens, and nobody is able to really explain that to me, especially since it's not even required that our director be present at those meetings. It could be anybody. I'm trying to understand how this helps us as a community. How does that make us a better, stronger recreation department with fantastic parks like we have right now? How do we get there without... We were the ones that were getting in the van and going to different communities, doing research on the updates for the recreation center that we currently have. There were lots of conversations that we used to get in the van, and we would drive to the different parks every year, and we would assess and evaluate what needed to be done, what was the next goal. That hasn't happened. That hasn't happened since we've had new leadership. And how meeting less is going to make us better, I don't understand. And maybe one of you could answer that. One of the requirements that was stated in the new ordinance is assist in seeking grants and other funding sources. This was something that other directors that are paid, and you have paid people that do grant writing. I don't know how that falls on the responsibility of a volunteer. To be a volunteer at special events, city parks, and recreational facilities as needed. I know, I see all these same faces at many of our events throughout the city, but I know I've been at just about every single one event without it being required. I don't understand the purpose of having it be a requirement. And all I can say is, Matt said at our last rec committee meeting, when we were there talking about this, he goes, "Well, you should be there." He wasn't even at our 4th of July celebration, but we should be there. It doesn't make any sense to me. How do these proposed changes help us fulfill our mission statement? I don't, I don't know, and I'm looking to all of you for an answer. We were just told at July's rec committee meeting that nothing is really changing, but no one could say why we're changing the ordinance so dramatically, or how it benefits our community at large. Matt is a nice person. I can say that he has not embraced the rec advisory board since he came on board, and he's made it pretty evident that we're a thorn in his side. But I can say with experience that I don't believe him to be a strong leader. He has not made an effort to get to know some of his employees and members of prominent groups in our community, as it has been told to me. Matt is a good bureaucrat, and if that's what you all want, then so be it. And I thank you all for listening.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Any other citizens?
Hi, Denise Hiker, 57 Country Squire Road, Palis Heights. I'm not going to go over, and I'm on the rec advisory board as well, and that's why I'm speaking on that behalf. I'm not going to go over everything in detail, but the points Linda's making is it's something you're going to be voting on today. And it all happened so, so quickly, and I just want you to know that. And we were given this new ordinance that you're going to be voting on today over the holiday weekend of July 3rd, which I know a lot of people didn't even see for another week or two later because they were on vacation. It was then talked about at a rec committee meeting, which I know not all the Aldermen were even able to be at as well, so they didn't even have the opportunity to hear our concerns firsthand. I was not able to be at the last rec meeting because I was on vacation. So this all seems to be getting pushed through so quickly, and there are valid concerns on the rec advisory board. Every board member I have talked to have concerns about these changes, and that we will no longer be able to represent the community we live in if we vote on this and say that this ordinance is what we want for our city. I really don't think so. I've lived here for 44 years. I've volunteered for many, many things. I think most of you know who I am. And I'm willing to be, and I have always believed that I would be a great steward to this community. That's what I do. I'm not looking for glory. I'm not looking for big pay, as you know, this is volunteerism. We're just looking to make this community what we all want it to be, a really great place. And I think we have made it that way. We want it to continue that way. And the way we continue it that way is to have input from the community, hear what people in the community want, and work with us on it. And I believe that this ordinance that's being proposed today does not allow that any longer. Three meetings a year is not allowing, is not enough to hear what the people of this community want to say and to work to get these things accomplished, that some of the things like Linda mentioned earlier. I mean, you wouldn't believe. I mean, at one of our last rec board meetings before Palmer Park was developed, we, that came up with the new surfacing that we have at that park now. That came out of our meeting. And on, and on, and on, and on. We do these things just because we know this is the best thing for our parks and recreation, our city. We want to continue to do those things, and we want to continue to have great board members. I know the term limits. I have a concern with that as well. It's gone from four years, five years down to four years in this new ordinance, and then you have to take a break for a year, which I don't understand that at all because it's not like we have an abundance of people running to fill these positions. We have had years where we have gone without a board member for over a year to come and represent people of every ward. That's the other thing we do in RAB. There are members of every ward on our committee and people in all age groups, senior, young people, singles, families. So we try to have a good representation. All I'm saying is, I don't think that this new ordinance represents what's best for our community, and I hope that you, I don't know what we can do about it at this point, but if there is something you can do so that we can make some adjustments to it, I'd really greatly appreciate that. You guys have always been open and easy to work with, and I hope that that continues. Thank you.
Harlan Wyvoda, 7640 West 135th Street, Orland Park, Illinois. Before I say anything, I too, I've volunteered with those two, their class act, and I do believe that the city council should listen to anything, any advice that they give because they broke the mode on those two. Those are two of the best volunteers that you, the city will ever come across. And I think everybody here knows that. And back to 151.20, my water issue. The reason that I keep coming to these city council meetings is because the water issue has continued. My house flooded on July 23rd. It flooded, my backyard flooded again on August 7th, and without the help from a city and a county, there's nothing I can do. I wish, I'm a little amazed that my own Alderman has never asked me a question. He's never come by my house. He's never made a phone call. He's never emailed me anything. Jack has been there. The mayor has been there.
Harlem, it works both ways, too. I mean, you've never actually contacted me one time. You went right over my head.
No, I didn't go over your head. I started at the bottom.
I'm just saying, there's two sides to every story.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm a little bit surprised, a little bit.
I've been by your house many times, including today.
Okay, well, then I apologize. Okay, but this is the kind of help that I've been looking for, okay? The Cook County came to my house to issue me a citation because the city of Palis Heights and Cook County, in their trying to get this culvert resolved, decided that they didn't like things that I did to try to protect my property, okay? Because my trees have died, my bushes have died, my backyard gets flooded, I can't mow it. So I did things because I couldn't get any more help. I took it upon myself to do a few things. So the Cook County government came to my house to issue me a citation. The man was a very nice, gracious man, and I asked him, just like I was just asking you just now, can I bother you for 20 minutes? And he says, "What do you need me for 20 minutes for?" I said, "I just want to walk you around the property. I just want to show you what I've been dealing with since 2013. Please, just give me, give me, give me 20 minutes." And he said, "Sure." He says, "I got plenty of time." So I walked him around my property, and I said, "Look, this is what they did. This is what was approved." And then I, then we talked, and we walked all the way down to the far end, all the way to the neighbors on the other side. We walked all the way down to the other thing, and this was his response. He sent the letter, an email, to his boss. His boss is in charge, and his name is Mike. I won't say any last names. It says, "Mike, I was at 7640 135th Street this morning to speak with the resident about the rip rep that he placed in the ditch along 135th Street and across culvert that was blocked by him. I must say, it was very interesting to hear what this couple has gone through for over a decade. They were very polite and understanding of why I knocked on their door. Mr. Harlan Wyvoda gave me a tour of his property and showed me the loss of trees and so on that they have experienced over the years, and what they are still dealing with due to the flooding situation not caused by them. I took pictures myself of the ditch to the east of them that maintenance came by yesterday and mowed, trimmed the ditch line. I am going to forward you emails he sent to me," because I sent him the emails of all the questions and things that I had sent to the city of Palis Heights. I sent him those emails, okay? He says, "I forward you the emails he sent to me so you can see the ongoing problem. I am also copying him on this email. We can discuss further by the phone my thoughts of the possibility of rectifying the situation, if there is any at this point, both by Cook County and Palis Heights need to get involved in his opinion." And that's the kind of cooperation that I've been looking for. Now, I've showed you many emails, and all I ever got from the people in public works was, "Thank you, okay, we'll look into that." And then the only time that they actually came over was when my neighbor didn't like what I had done, which was a recommendation, what the work that I did was recommended by the city's engineer, which the city never made the previous homeowner, the homeowner, do. So I did it at my own, with my own funds and my own labor. So I did it myself, and the city, what did they do? They gave me a 30-day notice to remove and fix the things that the city engineer asked to be done in 2014, but was never done. And so all I'm asking for is help. And the mayor has been the only one who has tried to help me, but the problem is that I'm dealing with Palis Heights, I'm dealing with the county, I'm dealing with a neighbor who's not very easy to get along with, and I'm stuck. I'm absolutely stuck. I am so discombobulated right now, I'm at a loss for words. I don't know what to do anymore. So again, at the finish, please listen to these two. I volunteered with them a long time ago, and they're hard workers, and you don't want to lose them.
Thank you. Thanks, ma'am. Any other citizens, please? If not, Finance Committee?
Mr. Mayor, we have no formal item on the agenda, but I do want to report that over the last couple of weeks, the members of the Finance Committee have been meeting with the representative of the Police Department, and all year long, and it's just dragging out with, you know, COVID and vacations, we continue to negotiate the police contract. It's getting closer and closer, but we're really, the way I look at it, the longer they take to resolve it, the better off it is because it's going to be more expensive. And because they are looking for, with these inflation, you know, things that are hitting all of us, it's also going to represent some higher wages and other things. So hopefully, a future meeting will have a better report and a more formal report, but so many meetings keep getting discussed, and then the back and forth, it's just been going on all year. And the last thing I want to report on is just that, thank all the citizens for supporting the businesses, because as you can see from the financial report that our city treasurer, Jim Damicki, gave, the city's in darn good shape, and a lot of that comes through revenue that we pick up and all these little taxing things that you pay as residents. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Basso is not here.
He just asked to run by a few things. Basically, Alderman Basso always refers to being on the outlook of possible improprieties such as people wanting your money more than they like their own, so things that add scams, per se. But there's some nice information packets over at the police station on the front desk, complete folder, covering just about every possible thing you can go through, the grandfather scam, the IRS scam, the construction stamps, all the way down the line. Concise information, how to avoid them, numbers to call, IRS, the whole bit. So feel free, I gave Alderman Basso a copy of them that he would have read in entirety, but they're pretty lengthy, but feel free to go over there. They're right at the front desk, pick you up some, get yourself advised of what these new scams or latest things are, because they're always out there. The other thing is, he asked me to mention that schools are going to be starting again pretty soon, and we're asking the residents and people to be aware of the local speed limits and streets with the children, be walking to and from and down to the schools and everything. Lawson asked you to be sure you lock your cars up when you're leaving them over at night. It's an ongoing thing, and a lot of people have been, like, leave their garage doors open. There's been at times that people are wide down there and look at the garage to see what you have, and then come back, they ask, you know, they need their golf clubs because they forgot theirs at home, so they're going to come and get yours. So advice, if you're not, don't need to, keep it open, close it, because they're running, they're doing it. It's all part of the thing. Other than that, that's pretty much the safety thing, especially be aware of the back to, back to school coming up and everything, and the kids on the street. That's it.
Just as a adjunct to the public safety, this Friday is the cop on the top. This morning, we were there for the ribbon cutting of the new remodeled Duncan, Dunkin', not Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin', 128th and Harlem. And the, so on Friday, to benefit Special Olympics will be the cops on the top of the Dunkin'. So just keep that in mind if you've got some extra coin in your pocket there. All right, municipal grounds and property, Alderman Begley.
Thanks, Mayor. I do not have a report tonight.
All right, thank you. Alderman McGovern, planning?
We have a little bit of an issue. Our gentleman sitting over here is building a garage, and it's not on the agenda tonight, and for the variances requested for his garage. What's your address? 76 what Carmichael?
7620 Carmichael.
7620 Carmichael, and it's not on the agenda. It was brought up to council last time on the, to move for the approval when you, tonight was for adoption, but it's not on here. So I don't know if we should proceed, or do we want to go on to new business and bring this back? I have all the details here from what he's asking on the garage to get done, but again, it's not on the agenda.
I'll allow him, if somebody has an objection to it. Okay.
No objection.
Let you move then.
Being in the direction, I'll follow through on it then.
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt an ordinance for, for address at 7620 South Carmichael, West Carmichael, correct?
This is Carmichael Drive.
7620 Carmichael Drive. For a variance on square footage from the allowed 660 square feet to 864 square feet. That's one, do you want all, vote on one at a time, or all as a group?
All at one, all at one.
All at one.
All at one. Also, a variance in garage height from 15 feet to 17.1 foot, is that correct?
Yep.
And requesting a six-yard side variation, side yard variation from the required 10. In other words, he wants to be six feet from the side yard versus 10, correct?
Yes.
And that's, that's all I got from memory on that.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Key. Discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye. And that's the end of Mr. McGovern's report.
All right, Recreation, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the fourth payment to Georgia's landscaping amount of $69, 929.42 for work completed on the Misty Meadows Park project.
Moved by Alderman Key. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Upwind Design in the amount of $6,000 for ASLED grant preparation for the city of Palis Heights for a recreation redevelopment project and before.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford.
So this is, the state has announced that for next year, they're opening up the ASLED grant amount, and they've raised the limit of those grants from 400,000 to 600,000. That's why it's asking for just a project and not something specific, because we had something on the agenda, but we might be doing more than just one thing. So. So that's that's why it's like that.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Lewdowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Bagley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
And that's the end of Mr. McGovern's report.
All right, recreation, Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the fourth payment to Georgia's landscaping amount of sixty nine, nine twenty nine and forty two cents for work completed on the Missy Menos Park project.
Rule by Alderman Key, is there a second? Second by Alderman Violet, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewdowski.
Aye.
Alderman Bagley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve the city attorney to draft an ordinance amending the city code section thirty four point five zero, thirty four point five four pertaining to RAB.
Rule by Alderman Key.
Yeah, I'd actually like to make a motion to amend the amendment if if I could be heard on that, Mayor.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
So I'll admit that I was not at the last committee hearing, a committee meeting on this, so I didn't have a chance to review this and discuss this and hear out some of the RAB members. And I just want you to know on behalf of the council, we are very, very grateful for everything you guys have done over the past many decades, frankly, and we appreciate that, and I think I can speak for everyone when I say that. The one thing that after reviewing the proposed ordinance that I would like to make an amendment on is the board purpose. And I think there's some confusion as to whether or not the RAB role is now strictly involving with programming or with parks, facilities and programming. And so the board purpose only says programming, so I just wanted to make an amendment on that because the duties do include advising council, advising mayor on the programming parks and facilities. So I just thought it might be clearer to everyone if we make an amendment on that. And so I can just read that if you guys are okay with that. I'd like to make a motion to amend the wording of the ordinance thirty four point five four in the section titled Board Purpose. The primary purpose of the RAB shall be to serve in an advisory capacity to the mayor, comma, city council, administrative staff regarding parks, comma, facilities and recreation programs. I that would be what my motion would be to amend the board purpose.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to amend it first.
It's literally just adding the word.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, so before we vote, I do I do have some comments. I don't think there's a person up here that does not respect and hear the words that our volunteer committees and the volunteers from our city, you know, have to say. This was not a change that was developed because our parks director decided one day that there needed to be changes on rec, the advisory board. This, there was a meeting between the Matt from the rec department, the administration, and myself representing our committee, and we tasked, after long discussion, we tasked Matt with coming up with some appropriate changes. None of the people that tasked Matt with that job felt that after we reviewed what he had given us back, and and it took a little while for that to happen, for him to gather that information for us, and we presented that to the committee, none of us felt that it limited in any way any of the members of the rec advisory board. We feel like they can do everything they've done in the past, that we're not limiting them. They still have access to our committee, they still have access to put their suggestions. I I know it's three times a year instead of twelve, but it's it's the month before the the booklets come out for the rec programming. And so that's why there's three meetings. They also have access to you as mayor and the administration at all times. They have access to to me and my committee. So I'm not sure, I feel bad for the members of the rec advisory committee because I'm not sure we could make a change without them feeling like it's an attack on them. So I feel for them in that they see this as an attack on them, but with every cell of my body, I'm telling you, that's not the, that's not what is driving this. I think these are healthy changes, they've been looked at for quite a while now, and we've tweaked them several times, and this is the final thing.
And I could just add one more for the discussion, just because I don't think that they have seen the final version or the the proposed final version, and I did just want to highlight, just so that everybody's comfortable with this, that there's actually a portion in there that says, it may also hold special meetings as it deems necessary. Special meetings shall be at the request of the chair of the RAB and administrative staff or on request of three members. There's also an opportunity for subcommittees and ad hoc committees. So I think if there is a need, you guys absolutely have every right within the new ordinance for special meetings as needed.
Yes.
So the motion on the floor is just to draft the ordinance now.
The way it sits with that one change from Alderman Bagley.
Mr. Mayor, I just a couple of comments. So I'd like to be the double advocate on some of the comments, and I'm not a member of the rec committee, and actually, I haven't even seen the ordinance because for some reason, at least on my iPad, it's didn't, it didn't pull it up. So some of the items, and I don't know if other people have the same experience, but item number thirteen or fourteen is not in the package. So I I'd like to look at it a little bit more because, you know, I think in this day and age, and especially as even Harland pointed out, a couple of the members who are sitting here and made those comments, they volunteer for everything, and they're in these different meetings. A lot of, a lot of cities and towns and villages don't have that luxury where you're looking for people to participate and be involved in different things. I think in Payless Heights, between the car shows, the beautification and all that, we are so lucky that we have so many people in the audience and that aren't even here tonight that do volunteer and to, I think, stymie the residents in a way, even though, as you pointed out, Jeff, and I know you guys are very level headed, that, you know, they can still do all these other things outside of the committee. You know, I'd like to point out too that one of the things we've seen, and, you know, some of us have been up here twenty years, we've seen the head of the rec department come and go for other opportunities to other cities. So when the administrations change, just like in, you know, the city of Payless Heights or the federal government or whatever government we're talking about, you have to go through like a period of time of adjustment when you get these personnel changes, and people come and go. This group comes and goes because some of us, you know, retire, get voted out of office, new people come in, and there's constant change. So to me, if it doesn't really make that much of a difference, as you pointed out, and that, you know, they can still see the mayor, they can still see you, Jeff, and this and that, I mean, that sounds very logical, and I probably would agree with that, but in a way, since it obviously means something to the people that do participate in those committees, why would we want to basically change something to just make the change? I mean, I'm not a rec, in my twenty years, I haven't been on the rec committee. So, you know, I know you guys do a lot, you can see it by the money that's being spent here. But, you know, that's my only point is, this is almost like you have a well-run Ferrari. Why would you go in there with this this pen and start messing around with it? I mean, I.
I hear what you're saying, but that's not the case.
Okay.
It's not running like a Ferrari. And so we tasked someone to make changes, and we've discussed this a lot. And I can tell you that if we delay it, it's coming back exactly this way in two weeks.
I didn't.
The entire rec advise, the rec committee is here tonight. I don't, nothing's going to get changed.
Okay.
I've talked to all the, I've talked to everyone.
I just voiced in my opinion, I just, I mean, you know, because.
Yeah.
I'm involved in a business.
Absolutely.
We have a rec advisory board members that are, you know, they kind of shadow the big board members. And it's always good to get the, you know, other people's perspectives in everything that we do, you know? I mean, that's why if you have, if you go see a cancer doctor or any doctor and the guy tells you some bad news, you want to go see someone else to see if you can get some other opinions. And that's the only thing I was just thinking is that, you know, it's nice to have people in the community who are paying taxes to listen to some of their concerns, you know, which I think we try to do here on a constant basis most of the time. And so that that's, and as I said, I don't, I'm not aware of everything you do because I'm not on a committee. I didn't see it until Jake just handed it to me. I'll reread it tonight, but.
Did you read the formal ordinance? Did you see the new one yet?
They just handed it to me. I remember I talked and I was since you did it.
With that, if that's the case, and there's two Aldermen missing, maybe it should be a full council decision, just defer it to the next council, council meeting, so everybody votes on it.
So your motion is to defer.
I'll make a motion to that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, one question, is it possible, because if I'm hearing this correctly, and I'm not on the rec committee either, but the the volunteers that have been involved for multiple decades haven't seen the the changes to the ordinance?
And they might not actually be, they might actually be okay with it to a certain, I mean, because what, some of the concerns I'm aware of, I think are are not as, you know, so I'm just saying, it might not be bad for them to see it.
Hang it, hang it a second. The the original, the original changes were sent out, and we asked that they be sent to the to the rec advisory board. They received that. Three members of that board came to the next rec meeting and shared all their concerns. And we directed at that time Matt to go back to the and make some tweaks to it, which he did, and he shared those with the rec advisory board the last time they met.
No, 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 he didn't have him.
That that was the point, it seems like there might be some miscommunication between our, you know, valued volunteers, and I don't think that there's any mal intent, I think, I don't know.
I agree.
But just getting everybody on the same page makes an awful lot of sense.
I'll second, I'll second Jake's motion.
Motion to defer to the next meeting then.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the next city council meeting?
Yeah. They'll be here, everybody's on board, he'll read the ordinance.
Yep.
And they're.
Make sure that they get, you know.
And the copies to the ladies.
I mean, was I the only one? I mean, is this on the agenda?
No, it came, it came on through the email, the final draft of it, that's the first draft.
We were sent two different agendas.
The highlighted parts I put in it, they just gave the circle parts or some of the things that they addressed.
Because it is good to always get, be able to read it before you vote.
I received the most recent version from Matt, I can forward it to council.
You got a couple of weeks to digest the information there, and these two guys will be back then.
All right, all right, so motion to defer to the next meeting, all right. Anything else, Alderman?
No, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Roads and construction, Alderman Clifford.
Ah, yes, I'm happy to announce that the, as I did last week, the asphalt strike or the quarry strike are over. We've started, we were two weeks behind, we finally got our starting, our two thousand twenty two road program, started over by McIntosh, we started in Westgate, soon to come in the old and the old west, old town districts within the next ten days, start grinding streets and that. Hopefully, we'll catch up, and everything should be pretty well set on that, everything's on schedule, except for that slight delay in that, but they are out there now, everything's, they got the materials, we are doing the work, we're doing the bigger jobs for us, McIntosh and Westgate and some intermediate streets and here and there, but other than that, Punch List is fine, one hundred and twenty third street, that's all been rectified, all cheese crossed and eyes dotted. The bridge work is still going on there, be aware, Route eighty three and one hundred and twenty seventh, again, just for your notification, when you approach those streets, I know you've seen it, there's two signs that say no left turn, one says say no right turn depending on the direction, yet people turn there. I did ask the police that were sitting over there, could they do something about that? There's been some near accidents in his remark, not our police department, his remark was, I'd have to put two squads there. So evidently, be careful because the state of your county is not going to do anything to correct that situation down there. The other thing for noted construction on the roadway is by the Hamptons on Route eighty three, and they're doing some pipeline repairs by Mama Vesuvius. Other than that, that's it.
You've got two items on here.
Pardon?
You've got two items on the agenda.
Oh, do I? I was giving the updates, I got them, trying to do them all by memory. Motion to approve purchase of two flashing school scored, school crossing road signs, some tapco safe travels in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty five dollars and twenty four cents.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman McGovern.
And if you'd like to know what those are, those are for the rec center crossing, they're the flashing yellow lights, that'll be good a warning for the crossing at the rec center area there. Took a while to get it through IDA and everything, but finally, we got that, got that on the board. So with that, a motion to approve thirteen thousand, one fifty five, twenty four to tapco safe travels.
All right, any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Bagley.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
And one other item, the traffic control study on Route eighty three between Harlem and Ridgeon on reducing the speed limits and making Trinity Christian High School a school safety zone, it's still being in the works, we should have an answer for them. We hopefully by next month or next roads committee meeting on reducing the speed from forty five miles an hour to thirty five miles an hour, being it's basically residential from Harlem to Ridgeon, and a school is right there. And some extra signage and turn laneage on Oak Park Avenue for safety of coming in and off of Oak Park Avenue will will be done within the next month or two also. That's it.
Place the permits and franchises, Alderman Lewdowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
All right, Alderman Violet?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Fiscal committees, Alderman Key, business and economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next Wednesday on the twenty fourth is move-in day for the freshmen at Trinity College, and for the first time, our Chamber of Commerce is actually coordinating the event along with the city called Welcome Back, and where they get some of the restaurants in town to donate food items and feed the incoming freshmen and their families. And then I I know from some advertising, I saw that they're also trying to get some of the businesses to offer discounts to the students and their families. Sometimes it's it's for a couple of months and some, some businesses actually do it for the whole year. And so that that's happening next Wednesday on campus, it's usually in the morning hours and and done like by one o'clock if anyone wants to drop by and and see that. And then, as you mentioned before, it was nice to see that the Dunkin' had their grand reopening. Anyone that's been driving by, it wasn't just a rebuild of the store, they did quite the drainage with, you know, sewers, and they ripped out the entire parking lot and the drive-through and had to re-rebuild it. So it was quite, quite the effort by them to put that back together in a speedy way. So, and that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Cable TV, I don't think anyone's got a report for that.
Yeah, no, no report.
All right, any old business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one thing, I know, I thought it might be covered on one of the other committees, but in reading the regional the other day, there was a good comment in there that Alderman Bassel brought up at the last meeting two weeks ago about the ring doorbells and the other competitors that do the same thing, that they're looking, the police would like to have residents that have those viewing things in their, on their promises or security cameras to let them know because with people having hit and runs and, you know, thefts that Jack pointed out, people breaking into garages and other things, it does help the cops track people down and try to keep the safe, the streets as safe as they possibly can. We know there's a lot of that stuff's going on. So I thought that, you know, regional did put it in the front page, I believe, and just kind of, we bring it up every once in a while to remind the people that don't get the regional to maybe this is, they're watching TV.
Oh, and there is an item to back up the public safety, because my, the ring system there is to unite anybody that wants to volunteer to allow the police to accept them, so if they do have some, they can check cameras to see where they're going in and out. On that note, we have just approved a purchase of certain cameras, I call them the in and out cameras, that'll be placed in strategic spots among, around the city. If something happened, burglary, robbery, physical crime, stuff of that nature, we'd be able to track every car that comes in at certain of these key points, when they came in and when they went out, based on the information at the scene of the so-called crime, along in conjunction with the ring cameras. So if something did happen, we would know where that car came in and came out and be able to apprehend the perpetrator. came in and when they went out, based on the information at the scene of the, the so-called crime, along in conjunction with the ring cameras. So if something did happen, we would know where that car came in and came out and be able to apprehend the perpetrator. So those are going to be coming up pretty soon too, this summer or in the fall. We're only starting with a few at key points that entry. That's all we're going to be. They're not going to be in the middle of the residential area, but points where you would come in and out of the city. So that, that's it on that.
All right. Any other business?
I just want to be, Clark, Mike, when you said we need some time before the next meeting, it's so that the aldermen who may not have gotten.
Yeah.
So then you can read it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I think, um.
Absolutely.
We don't have to beat it up.
And so they took the, the four aldermen who are on the rec committee who've seen this pretty, um, many times, you know, Jack, Don, I, and Heather, and so the other four certainly could be reached out to with information from RAB.
Great, thank you. Citizens who wish to ask questions? New business? Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Swakowsky, 7361 West Distinella Drive, and I'm a 24-year resident of Palis Heights and a three and a half year ovarian cancer survivor. And I just wanted to thank every one of you tonight for approving and, uh, letting us tie teal ribbons come the month of September for the N O C C, the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition.
Right. Thank you. You're more than welcome. I think this is the third or fourth year we've done that, so.
Yeah, this, and I'm the first time being the resident that's actually doing it.
Great.
So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right.
New business?
Another subject, that's not, had to do with water. Every time I come up here, I have to say I live in Orland Park, because I live in Orland Park section of Palis Heights, which I hate. And, and it irritates me to no end, even though Orland Park is a very good suburb. I prefer to be saying that I live in Palis Heights. It, it causes so much confusion, it's unbelievable. If, uh, here I got a letter from the city of Palis Heights, which had the wrong address because they had the wrong zip code. But, so I'm going to pass this real quick, so if you start or whatever. I have had it already. It's been a pet peeve of mine for a long time. Obviously, you know that. Uh, I haven't agreed with the post office that they will deliver our mail. They don't care what city you put on it, as long as you have to write zip code. So I have been changing all my mail to Palis Heights with the Orland Park post office zip code, and I get my mail. It would be nice if the city were trying to make an agreement with, to have a second zip code. Uh, Lennox has four of them. New Island has three. Alsup has multiple. And then we don't have to say that we live in Orland Park. We can say we live in Palis Heights. And you can see by that, there's one mail that was returned, uh, which was mailed from the city of Palis Heights, so they were even confused, and one that went through with the Orland Park zip code, but it says Palis Heights. So if somebody could, if we can get our new city administrator to just, like, 'cause the post office says they don't care.
Well, Harlan, I, Veronica said that I got a call today, which I've talked to a number of times, Sean Caston, who's our new representative since under the redistricting. And, uh, I'm going to call him back tomorrow because I didn't get today, so I will mention it. That's usually one way you can do it, is have your congressman getting involved. So we have a new congressman. Uh, we'll see what we can do and go, start from there.
Okay.
We did, we did contact him about six months ago with no avail, so, uh, we've had a change of congressman since then. So actually, we'll, at the end of the year, this, this next.
Mr. Mayor, on that point, Harlan, like, Alderman Kamerski, who's, was on the committee here for a long, long time, she spent a lot of time, and I mean, she's been off for, I don't know what, four, I don't know, four, five, six years already.
Four.
And, whatever. And, uh, she spent a tremendous amount of time trying to get that done, because as much as it irks, um, the residents, some of the residents in your area, in McIntosh, some of the other people are going in the other direction, they fought it. You know, and so, and I do think maybe one of those people may have moved. But, um, so this one going on, I think for like at least 10 years.
You can use either one. You can use, I, the, the, the post office person told me, they don't care what city name you use, as long as you have the correct zip code.
Right.
So, because that, because she says to me, I says, "Well, you know, I would like to have my mail at Palis," you know, "I would like to make mine Palis Heights." And she says, "We don't deliver mail to Palis Heights," she said to me. And I said, "Do you deliver mail to 7640 West 135th Street?" And she's, yeah, she said, "Yes." And I said, "Well, that's Palis Heights." And she said, "What?" And I said, "Yes, that is incorporated into the city of Palis Heights. So you are delivering mail to Palis Heights. You just don't know it."
Well, I will tell you, and that's one of the reasons that when this first came up, like, years ago, when, one of the years when we had to go out and get our petitions to run for aldermen, I, when I walked through that area, some of the people said, "I, I'm not signing your thing because I live in Orland Park." And yet, as Jack just pointed out in his report, right now, you're the one section of the fourth ward where we're putting in better streets. And so it is a little, I mean, we feel the same way as you do. We'd love to get you into the city since the city's putting in streets and taking care of everything over there.
It's a technical. It comes down to the post office.
Right. No, I know.
We know that.
Let's move on.
We, we'll deal with it.
The thing there, though, though, is that's, it, it, if, the thing about it that would be nice, which a lot of people don't realize, i- is that when it comes to city stickers, you might want to look into that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we, just real quick, went through this before. I, as the mayor said, he talked to one of the Congress, and I talked, went up personally and talked to the postmaster general on an unrelated item on mailboxes, with the preferred mailbox at the Wooden Winks. And I asked about that issue years ago, and as he said through Alderman Marcy, and they said the same thing. It has to almost go through Congress to get the orders to change the things, which I didn't call at the time Newman, and left a message with DA, and I didn't get back to him. I understand that, but it isn't like no way he's trying. It, basically, you've heard the expression, "It's an act of Congress." It's an act of Congress. So basically, that's where it is. I don't know what else I can do. So, but under new business, one thing, and that'll be it.
Right.
Being a veteran, being Alderman McGovern, a veteran, a wounded Purple Heart veteran, Vietnam, 1965, there's a, I don't know if a lot of people, I sent things out about it, but there's a ceremony being held at Moraine Valley College on September 10th at 11:00 AM, and it's called Field of Honor. And we were asking, we were asking sponsors, they wanted to sponsor a flag for a loved one, deceased one, uh, serving active duty, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, uh, to be placed there. A flag would be placed there in a banner, tall flag, five feet by three foot flag, in a standard with their name and information. Be approximately, hopefully, 500 flags to start this with, that you'll be able to, there'll be an opening ceremony at that time, band, some speakers, that you can walk through those fields of flag, kneel down, say a prayer to a lost one or a loved one or one that's served, maybe a remembrance. Uh, and it's going to be quite touching, right? Thing, it's the first time they're doing this, and we're hoping by next year that we'll even double that amount there. It's going to be a sight to see all those flags standing in the center there. So it is at Moraine Valley, September 10th, 11:00 AM, the opening ceremony sort of flags. Uh, one of the aldermen, I'm sort of helping out with, his name's Alderman Mike Labarre. He's on the Palis Hills City Council. He's sort of the chair on this. So, and he's also Alliance Club member, but it's too late to buy the flags, though. I think now they got it pretty much to a point they got to move ahead. So, but if you want to go over there and see that, if you're going to do it, go over, drive, take a look at it, and keep it in mind for next year. That's it.
All right. Any other? Airtime, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.